Of America and to the people in malicious states, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Scott. Yes, hello, I have a handout here with. It's got a printout of our point, which I'm gonna have to talk through, I guess, today for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just sit here. All right, uh, thank you for allowing me to present to you today. Uh, my name is Scott Sanser. I'm with CDM Smith. I'm consultant study manager for the propel US thirty west study uh for indot. And so I'm just gonna go through where we're at today, uh, the alternatives development and particularly the level three screening, which is the report that was published last month. Um, so as a refresher, the propel studies actually encompass quite a length of US thirty and thirty one um all the way to Ohio state line in south. Um, to Hamilton County, uh, but the US thirty west study is along US thirty uh from state road forty nine in Porter County to beach road. Um, in Marshall County and then south on thirty one to canary on seven hundred Bolton County. And so as part of this process, our study team has been engaging the public and study stakeholders over the last two years as part of the study and the feedback we received has been. Um, and continues to be a vital part of the success of the study and it helps inform and guide the next twenty plus years of transportation improvements along the corridor. Uh, we don't anticipate that the hell studies will identify or recommend a single build alternative at the end. Uh, but it will create a reasonable set of alternatives that could move forward as part of indot's regular call for projects, which is typically a five year process. Um, as far as the schedule. Um, we started back in twenty twenty two. Um, right now we're at the level three analysis here in a late fall twenty twenty four. We published that report as of November twelfth, the public comment period is up until December thirteenth. So that's one of the reasons we're going out and talking to all the. Um, different commissioners and councils to make sure we're getting the word out. Um. So level three analysis in particular, um. Started later earlier this year. Uh, before that we had a level one and level two where we basically narrowed down potential alternatives um to something that was now. Along of the corridor in segments which I'll talk about. Um, so it's been a kind of an iterative process as we look, look at everything possible out there and then whittle it down to what we think works best for the transportation needs and what we heard from the public. So the first step was defining those planning segments and then we looked at improvement packages, which are essentially. Um, alternatives and we evaluated those to come up with recommendations. So the first thing are the planning segments and there were fifteen of these and planning segments are essentially just sections of the roadway that function as a system. To provide access and mobility within a geographic area. In our case, we we named them uh by a geographic um. Location such as Hamlet, for instance, but also numbered. Uh, and this is just a, it's a smaller segment of the corridor that can be used to analyze uh for the planning study. That's not necessarily the length of a future project or anything like that, but it's a way to look at it now. Could be, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. So after we had the planning segments, the next step was to form the improvement packages. And the improvement packages are essentially a combination of intersection improvements. With a facility type which together act as an alternative. So you can think of these as alternatives. Uh, we developed multiple improvement packages for each planning segment. So each of the fifteen segments. Um, different things went into creating these. We looked at um how in influence of an intersection concept at one location could um. Uh, impact adjacent intersections. So for instance, if we have an interchange proposed at one location. That would likely impact the adjacent intersections if they're close enough to make them closures or write it right out or something similar. Um, next we looked at access management, which I'll talk about more in a little bit. We looked at secondary intersections. So at level two, if you review that report, that focused on primary intersections in the study area, which there was twenty nine total. Um, so now we're also pulling in those secondary intersections and applying an improvement to those as part of the packages. Um. And then, so this, this graphic you see here uh basically shows um how. Access mobility kind of relate to each other when it comes to the different um types of facilities. So when you're looking at a, a high access facility such as a local street or minor collector, there's less mobility typically, which makes sense. There's more entrances and exits. Um, and then when you look at more of a, a higher order facility like a freeway or expressway, there's more mobility, but typically then there's less access in order to. Create a safe um situation for the higher speeds and better mobility. Um, within the study area, US thirty and thirty one are classified as major arterials. So as shown on the graphic. Uh, the major arterial typically has more bo- more mobility and less access than other facility types. Also, there are over a hundred fifty driveways, as we know, and direct access um to US thirty. Uh, which do not meet, not, not all of them meet in dots access management guidelines. So while these driveways are important for access, they can cause issues with safety um in operations. So the challenge we have is to make sure we're providing safety improvements, but also still allowing for the access. Uh, where it needs to be either to get onto thirty or across. Uh, so then we started evaluating the packages. We looked at a number of things. Um, the first two, safety and mobility, mobility also included access here. But the safety performance of each package was determined through a multi-step process that started with the identification of conflict points. So conflict points represent the locations where vehicle paths intersect at driveways, intersections or interchanges. Reductions in these are associated with improvements in safety as fewer conflict points typically result in fewer locations where crashes can occur. Uh, mobility analysis looked at travel time along US thirty, access and crossing points in the sense of how much distance between each would be present in a package. Uh, changes in cross corridor mobility uh as it relates to the distance between crossing points and also driveway impacts. Uh, we also looked at cost. So uh, the costs are presented in the report as a range due to the conceptual and planning nature of the study. Uh, the cost will likely change as more detail becomes available, but the cost estimates do provide a useful way to relatively compare between the packages for the study. Uh, we also looked at environmental constraints within each painting segment to determine potential impacts. Um, and these are presented are preliminary and reflect the level of detail available us during, available to us now during the planning study. We also looked at uh the study goals. So these goals were direct result of public feedback early in the study at the purpose and need um stage. And are a reflection of that public input. So the goals were economic development, equity and transportation, multimodal access and connections. Emerging technologies, fiscal and environmental practicality, corridor character and local access. So after the evaluation was complete, uh, we got to rating each of these improved packages. So some packages were eliminated. This meant the package meant the purpose in need, but it was considered unreasonable when compared to the other packages. Um, due to its limited benefits uh compared to its impacts or toss. It's likely this does not, this particular package would not warrant consideration as part of any subsequent need the studies in the planning segment. Um, some packages were carried forward. This means the improvement package meets the purpose in need. However, in comparison to others, the improvement package is considered to have just marginal benefits. In some cases, and they also have higher impacts or costs, but it will continue to be considered in future studies. Um, but requires further analysis to determine if it is a reasonable solution to the segments transportation needs. Then lastly, some packages were recommended. Uh, packages that were recommended met the purpose in need and are considered reasonable. Uh, these packages are considered among the best within a planning segment of the ones we looked at. At addressing the identified needs with limited impacts and without extraordinarily high costs, recommended packages likely do warrant consideration as part of any subsequent studies. Um, in that particular location. But I want to do want to stress at this time, there are no decisions that have been made about the future of US thirty or thirty one in the propel US thirty west study area. Um, and no projects related to the pedal have been funded by indot. A stated goal of the pedal study process is the identification of a range of reasonable alternatives. Given the needs identified within the study area, a reasonable alternative could consist of improvements at a single intersection, a string of intersections. Or and or the roadway sections in between them, depending on multiple factors, including statewide priorities and funding availability. Um, improvements could also uh be combined in different ways in the future to address the identified transportation needs and support the study, the goals of the study. So it's possible the improved packages could be mixed and matched across plenty of segments in the future. Uh, so I did include an example segment in there, um, I believe for Hamlet. Um, yeah, so in this particular location, uh, we looked at three different packages. Um, there was no existing driveways in the area, so uh we didn't look at the arterial or expressway light facility type. The expressway light is kind of a. Thing I actually that was created for the study based on feedback we received. It basically what it does combines the free flow situation of like an expressway. Or a freeway with access. It still allow, does allow driveway access right in, right out. Whereas an expressway normally would not. So this particular location didn't have any existing driveways, so that's not one of the options, but that is, you'll see it in other segments and that's the reason it's there. Um, but here there are just through three packages, two expressway, one freeway. Um, in this case, actually, in this particular segment, uh, given the just existing conditions and the, the issues we were seeing out there, we actually recommended the no build. However, the other three packages are still um carried forward. Um, and there's a variation of different improvements um there. There's a legend down there that um shows you which type of intersection it is. Um, but it's ma- it's mainly a combination of. In, in this particular segment, US thirty five is an interchange. So you can see in package one, two intersections to adjacent to it would be made right and right out. That type of thing. It's within access um consideration type of packages.
You're saying right in, right out on thirty five?
No, right, thirty five would not change. Yeah. Um. Yeah. So also I just wanted to make everyone aware, uh, we're out in the community as well as going to these different uh public meetings. We're also having community office hours. Um, we've been a couple of places. We were in Hamlet from November eighteen. Uh, we'll be in Valparaiso December second and Bourbon December tenth. Um, and also the report itself, if you're not able to read it online or whatever, there's uh paper copies at the library um at both uh in Knox and in Hamlet. Um, so that's available for people. And then definitely, uh, if you have internet access, propel us thirty dot com is the best place to go to see all the information. It's all there. There's videos, um, which I am not able to show you here, but. There are videos for all of these packages. So if you're wondering, well, what does that look like? Watch the video. It shows you in conceptual nature. How does, what does that right and right look, right out look like there? And it'll show you easier to understand, I think. Um, but all the virtual public meeting information is there. We did a presentation for the public meetings. It's all on there. The report's there. It's also the best place to comment, but except comments, paper mail as well. Um, so that's uh my presentation. Like I said, the official comment period for the level three report is through December thirteenth, but we're always happy to. To talk, so. Questions?
I don't think anything right now.
No, definitely a lot of information I encourage everyone to go online and review it and in your own time. I have comments. Definitely feel free to reach out to me or submit it through the online.
And you said there's more at the library, is it there?
Yep, yeah, the library has the full report and all the appendices and has all the information.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Free time.
Great trails.
Morning. Well, I'm Steve Lucas, uh, with Prairie Trails Club. We appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. Pass out here. I'm not gonna go through the weeds on all this, but I'm gonna kind of talk generally. Uh, in two thousand sixteen, uh, what, first of all, uh, the. This is about the, the Erie Trail as it goes through. Stark County and. Planners both for us on the Erie Trail and for the uh. Trail through Winnimack, the Panhandle pathway. Our, our planners said what we should try to do would be to have what they call connectors. So that we can maximize the use of, of those trails and particularly connectors between, between the two trails. Um. Actually, the, the people in Glasskey County got be- before the uh commission before the uh. People for the, the, uh, the trail in, in Stark County did the Erie Trail. And so in two thousand sixteen. Um, the commissioners approved a route between. Uh. The Erie Trail and. The Panhandle pathway that used in Stark County two hundred east. Um, and then it wanders through Glasskey County, goes through, um. Kind of the countryside and, and gets, gets to, to Winnimack. That was the first. Connector that was approved. That was in two seven, two thousand sixteen, then two thousand seventeen. Um. Gray Trails Club came before the commissioners and had. A couple of other routes recommended. Um, so that there was one that kind of followed, got to uh Bass Lake on the, what I would call the. South side of Bass Lake and another one that. Uh. Had to hook in uh at an angle and use. County Road eight hundred south to, to get to, to the beach property. Um, and so now what we're seeking is to amend that consistent with. Uh, an addition that we made to the trail. Through a, a grant from. Through a grant. Process, and I'm about to re- retire the sign. It's had better days, but a grant process with Indiana D N R. This was the Erie Trail route, the blue line, and then we added the yellow line, which takes it. Kind of past Bass Lake going southeast. And so we're now come, because we have this addition, we can simplify some of the routes. We can make them more direct. And more efficient. And we, we're also being responsive to what people have said to us. In terms of what they'd like to see accomplished. So I'm, I'm setting this out as, th- this is an example of the map that we use. The, what I call the Erie Trail is also the Great American Rail Trail, uh, the American Discovery Trail in US bike route thirty five. Um, so it's all color coded and it's to scale. Um, and then have you are here. This happens, there'll be all different you are here signs for. For different places on the trail. This one, it just as an example, happens to be the, the uh trailhead that's at US thirty five. That would be the sign in the US thirty five. Um, so what we're, we're seeking to do is, is first of all, uh, I'll reference. The, this route, which is the one that you did with the Glasskey County people. We're not. Talking about any change to, to that one or to this one, which goes basically to be basically a Bailey's. Um, but we're changing, we would like to see you change these. Whereas before we had to, to use eight hundred, which comes across and was indirect. Now we can basically just go north and south. Um, because of this extension, the extension went uh east of US thirty five to. Uh, County Road seven hundred east. So went that, that two mile segment. So that would be the adjustments. Um. We've talked with Rachel about these and what we did before was we, we worked with the, the county highway department to. Identify specific sites for you are here signs or excuse me, for uh share the road signs. And that's what we would do again, if you approve this request. The, I guess the nuts and the bolts of the request are in the. In the handout that I gave you, the part that is about two thirds of the way down. Um. Shows an A, B, and C. Those would be the adjustments that, that we would ask you to approve. We would. Uh, work with um Rachel O'Strick to identify particular places, places for signs. Um, we're not seeking any funding for this. We have the funding for the signs. Um. It either from you or, or from the highway department, but we, we would be working with them to pick out particular places to make the signs and. We probably would remove a sign from uh eight hundred. Uh, eight hundred isn't the best route in some ways for bike traffic anyway, cause it's got a, a lot of trucks going fast. Um, it's okay, but, but we, we kind of get away from that here. Um. And, and so that, that would be our request. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
The real head fault you're asking for the extra sign with our county. It's not enough, nothing to the road or anything like that.
No, nothing to the road, nothing to the road, just. Yeah, basically the, the on the ground of. Reflection of this will be there, would be share the road sounds.
Right. Okay, so, yeah. You didn't see anything in there, did you?
I'm taking notes. I'll make the motion that we approve the request.
Second.
Thank you very much.
I like say this work the way you're on the sign.
Yep, we will do that.
Wait.
Two minutes. They told you you have two minutes or what?
Minute and a half.
Minute and a half. All right, let's see if you want this. I'm actually um asking for two segments of roadways to be removed from the inventory. I don't know if you want to bring it up on the map or not, but it's four hundred southwest of state road twenty three and. It's not a marked road, three fifty southwest of state road twenty three, but if it was a marked road, that's what it would be, three fifty south. Um, these are two segments that are like the four hundred south is point five six of a mile. The three fifty south is point three eight of a mile. It's not a developed roadway. Um, I, it was put on our inventory back December sixth, two thousand seven. I don't know why. I checked with the orders office and to make sure that on GIS, it's not drawn as a road and it's not drawn as a road on, in either location. Um, so it would not have to revert back to the property owners. Um, right now. What they could see too is even looking at the property record card, both pieces um does not look like they're getting any road credits taken out. For either section. So they have been paying on taxes on that land. So I'm just asking. For the commissioner's approval to remove those two segments from the end up inventory.
So is that us giving the land up or just?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not even, it's not, yeah, it's not even drawn. It's not drawn as a road on GIS right now. We're just being paid for it by indot. I don't know why they put it on there.
But it'll still remain our road, just.
No, it would not be, it would not be a road any longer. And technically it's not a road right now on our side, only on indot's side. Cause there isn't, there's, it's not a developed roadway or anything.
So we would nothing to do with this.
Yeah, it's nothing, yeah, there's nothing that the county technically owns with it and you're not giving up anything. It's just. Indot has it that we're being paid for it and it's. Needs to be removed from the inventory.
You said it doesn't revert back to the property owners?
No, because it's not a drawn road right now on our GIS system.
So. Just cause I don't have a lot of experience with this. Then as it shown is just a public easement, because what I can see have.
It's not anything. On our side, it's not anything. It's just on the indot side. They think it's something and we're being paid for something.
Ask him if I can see property owners, you know, battling over who owns it.
No, that no. Because it's nothing on our side, there's no reverting that has to go back to the property owner. It's already. The property owner's property. It's just on the end.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Okay.
They, you know, not, not that they don't, they don't have it messed up.
Property to begin with, so there's no reversion to happen. Okay, I thought you, okay, I get that. Thank you.
So that was four hundred south and three fifty.
So the um point five six of a mile on four hundred southwest of state road twenty three and then point three eighth of a mile. On three fifty southwest of state road twenty three. And like I said, it's not even three fifty south. It's just. That's what it would be if you measured it out like that.
Right.
Cause it's exactly point five of a mile north of four hundred south.
Yeah, I'd say. Take them off of. End dot inventory.
You know, thank you.
Yeah.
That'd be my motion.
I was second. On favorite.
And when you, um. Minutes for that might lean in, I liked it specified in there. Back location and exact mileage, if you want to take that.
Okay, I will do it down, but thank you.
Oh, wait, you have, um. So I did get a little bit of information from central paving about making plug. Um, they would provide the plug mill, the loader. Two guys, you don't have to have the mix mix before they come out there, because they actually have a plug mill where you put it separately. It's point three two cents per gallon. So. Point three two cents per what? Per gallon? So a tanker is around fifty nine hundred gallons. Um. Just what our budget can hold, probably about twenty five tankers, which would run forty seven thousand dollars to have them make the plug.
What, what did it cost us when we made it last year?
Well, um, it didn't cost us anything because we. Well, um it didn't cost us anything because we just provided the.
How many tanks did you go there?
This past year, we only went through like nine.
And that's to be how many?
If we did, if we utilized our full budget and we did it all, it'd be around twenty five tankers. At around fifty nine hundred gallons, fifty six to fifty nine hundred gallons.
If they're under consideration, talk more about amongst those three. I got one other thing, when you're uh playing tires, we're getting there from the ocean.
Um, that's one, I think, which is one. Well, they might be out of. Yeah, we get the municipal discounts or them.
Is there any, have we checked lately on the, like La Crosse and Le Port?
No, but I can.
If you would.
Is there certain um there's names?
No, not really, just. Uh La Crosse is a. There you go.
And I couldn't hear you, you talking about tires, did you say?
If you will, just get a price, yeah, see what they. That could have been a while.
Okay.
So I got.
So I got to.
Um so I'm Aaron Anderson, I'm the Hamlet Fire Department, um this is the chief there. Um I approached the council, last council meeting in regards to funding for additional communication devices. Um we received five thousand dollars from the ARPA money for to go towards communications, we were seeking fif- fifteen essentially. To update some of our communication equipment. Um, we're looking to update communication equipment for some radios that J and K wasn't able to reprogram. It started there, JK wasn't able to reprogram some of the radios. Um that we actually own, so um. We're seeking some money to upgrade those, those devices to new devices. Um and then also to put tablets in some of our trucks to better support our mapping software and our dispatch system. Um, we'd be able to better communicate with dispatch. Um so we're seeking right around ten thousand dollars.
And what did the council tell you?
Council approved it, um they just said that they would approve it out of the seated money and they asked me to, to come to, to um commissioners for approval.
So ten more plus the five?
Yes, sir.
Did you already get the fine?
Yes, ma'am, we already, we received five maybe uh month and a half ago or two months ago. And that was the five thousand that was distributed, supposed to be distributed out of the article for all.
Couldn't like that extra for the sign. I'd like to see it come out of solar, got solar money coming, but either way.
And David said, suggested that at the, at the council meeting, um but there, I don't think there had been any.
Nothing, yeah.
Nothing yet, there's anticipation of some.
Now we haven't gotten out of Michael.
Not yet.
I talked with their attorney about that a week ago.
It's the same center.
They just need the councils sign off on them, so we gotta get in front of the council.
Yeah, let's not wait on that.
Yeah, uh I'll make the motion that we approve the uh request from Hamlet Fire. For the, the amount of ten thousand.
For the communication.
For the communications.
I'll second. Own favor. There you go.
Appreciate.
Talk to Michael and I get your check. Need a motion to accept the minutes of eleven twenty five twenty four, I'll make that motion. Second, own favor. Motion to accept the payroll claim to three hundred twenty eight, six thirty nine thirty. My second. Own favor. Open to accept the pair of the commissioners claims, warrant fifty four, six twenty, twenty one.
I like that motion.
Second, own favor. I'll read this out, Justin, if you would, help me if I'm not reading it right, this for the resolution. Requiring the commissioner's approval for the hiring of a private attorney using county funds. Anybody need that explained? Yeah, make a motion. I'll second. Michael, if you will, put it on the WKBI again, that we're looking for surveyors to give us estimates on the. For around the lakes. Well, I don't like any of the hurrying back on. I guess I can get anything.
I don't have anything.
Yes, and Michael. Anybody in the public?
Did you want Coontz like also or just Bass like?
Don't wonder if it's something maybe we should like do sections even at a time, I don't know.
Yeah, probably easier.
Because I'm wondering if some of them are like, well, that's a lot, so we don't want to.
Exactly, oh yeah, I'm for it, I just want to get it started.
I did put it on the radio before.
I know, that's why I'm asking, just put it on there again.
Okay.
Yeah, even if we just get bid.
I've got private clients right now around the area looking to get surveys and they're like six months out.
Yeah, well, I'd say we just get them started, even if it's a couple. Nobody in the public. Most in general, I'll make that motion, second.